I call the March 1st, 2022 closed session meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to allow the public instructions on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting tonight is open to the public in person and they can participate virtually. If you want to watch online, go to Fullerton.Legistar.com or to Spectrum Channel 3 or ATT U verse Channel 99. To make public comments virtually, you can log into Zoom and at zoom.us/zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797 and all that information and more details is available on the agenda.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, please kindly call the roll.
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And joining us online, Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Whitaker should be here shortly.
We will now hear public comment on any closed session items. Madam City Clerk.
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, we have an item we'd like to add it to the agenda this evening and allow public comments on that item as well. This item has arisen since the posting of the agenda cannot wait to the next regular council meeting. It's, we're asking you to agendize a closed session under the Government Code, Section 54957b1, a city manager-public employee evaluation. Ask you to make a motion to agendize that and approve it by at least a four-fifths vote.
Very good, sir.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Councilman Zara, Madam City Clerk, please feel free to call the roll.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Yes.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We'll return back to public comments on closed session items. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment?
No one in person and no one on Zoom.
Then we will recess to closed session. Thank you, everyone. March 1st, 2020, council meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to advise the public on how to participate?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's meeting is in person and also available to watch online at Fullerton.Legstar.com or any of our government cable channels. The public can make public comment either here in person or by joining Zoom at zoom.us/join or call 1-669-900-9128. The Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797 and that information and more is on the agenda on our website.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
And I believe Mayor Protem Whitaker is in the vicinity or walking in right now. Perfect.
And we have Police Chaplain Charles Frost here to give our, this evening's invocation. Mr. Frost, would you be so kind, sir? Thank you.
Let's stand together, please. Before I pray, I want to bring something to your attention. If you look on the Ukraine and watch your TV, we just think it's just a TV program. But if you'll watch, you'll see there's Joe Fireman working right with the bullets flying and the community is rallied around the police department. And they're the ones that's handing out the guns to the, to the, to the people there. We need to be in prayer for them. We need to remember that, that they're still doing their job even when the bullets are flying around them. So let's keep them in mind. Father God, I pray, as we kneel before you, we ask your guidance and your protection for those, Father God, that are in the Ukraine. We also pray, Father God, for those that are in Russia. We pray, God, that you'll put your arms and protect them. Let this end, Father. Let this tragedy in our world end. God be with everyone that's involved in this situation. Thank you for our councilmen who represent us in this community. Bless them, Father God. Give them wisdom. Be with our guys in the field, the police officers and the firemen. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And Chaplain Frost, if you don't mind, just remaining there, sir, how is, how are the, how's the spirituality in our police department, sir?
Spirituality in our police department is high.
Very good to hear.
And so is the, so is the attitude of the guys. They really are, they're a good bunch of God-fearing people, both men and women. And I thank you, council. I passed into Ukrainian church for a couple of years and Russian, it was Russian-Ukrainian church. And this is very personal, this war is very personal to me. But I thank God because I see the people like you leading the people in this war, the politicians, the cops, the firemen. And we just look at it like it's a television program. But if it wasn't for this council, men like you, then there would not be freedom. And so I thank you personally from my heart of hearts for your leadership in our community.
Well said, sir. God bless you and our police department as well. Councilman Silva, would you be kind enough as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have, I'll ask our city attorney, do we have any closed session reports, sir?
There's no report this evening.
Very well. And I'll ask any council members if they've had any ex-party communications to report. Any council members? Seeing none. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move on to public comments. So those that have registered to comment, please feel free to come forward.
Oh, on the, on the wall. In the microphone. If anybody else would like to speak, please line up on the wall so we can move you along.
Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Doug Cox, your chairman of your planning commission. And I come for you tonight to provide you an update on your planning commission. It's been an interesting year. As pandemic have impacted public participation, changes in staff, and the abrupt resignation of our previous chair have created some unique moments. However, staff and the commissioners are highly resilient and have adapted to these challenges as they've come before us. Some of our goals moving forward, some of the things I've been working on for a couple of years, now that I'm, I'm the chair, I'm happy to see that a few of them look like they might be coming to fruition. Study sessions for both housing developments and state policies affecting, affecting our city and that come before the planning commission, such as SB 9 and SB 10. So having study sessions will allow us to give the public another chance to hear what's going on in our community, get a look at some of the developments, and we all kind of get a better understanding. And at the end of the day, we want, we want greater efficacy in our programs and, and a better, a better process for our applicants. Looking to, been pushing for three years to get printed copies of Fullerton's general plan to planning commissioners. I've been there for three years. I've never been in a city where a planning commissioner could not get a printed general plan. So I've gone up and down the food chain, but what's great about now is we've got Greg Fost and our interim city manager, and they've worked to make that happen. And at the last meeting, they said, you're getting one printed up. So that is happening and I think it's a good thing because I'm old school. I like to write in the margins and if a commissioner wants those, they should have them. There's no reason why we should be kept ignorant in that regard. Also, printed copies of developer materials for planning commissioners. Before, we would just get these links. And so planning commissioners can ask for certain documents from the planning commissioner, from the developer, rather than going to a link and trying to go through their computer and read 150 pages. They can actually get that printed up from the developer as part of their packet. So those are things that I think are, are having a positive impact. And we've had staffing changes, but again, we've, we've dealt with those challenges and moved forward. One of the interesting issues that's come up, and it's come up four times, and I think it's something the planning commission, the city council needs to start looking at, and that's zoning administrator authority. And it always is around conditional use permits. We had that with the synagogue and behavioral therapy. And however you decide with that policy is what we'll move forward with. But that was done first administratively and then later it came back to us to bless it and it didn't happen. So it creates that strife and that's part of the process, but sometimes we don't have to go through that. And I think there's better ways to do it. The other one was raising canes. That has been done administratively. It hasn't come to us. And so it's been on the agenda, then off the agenda, and on the agenda. And there's a pattern going on. The last one was also Mowberry Street back last year with their patio and this year with Mickey's Irish Pub and Horse Saloon, which was just our most recent one. And alls we were really looking at was the alcohol on the back patio out there. That's what it all boiled down to. Yet, all the negotiations, everything else, we weren't a part of. That was all done administratively. So there are some things that measures of performance and measures of effectiveness and streamlining can work out, but at the end of the day, if we keep having the problems when they come to us and we're there seeing these things for the first time, we're not involved in that process. So I would humbly ask the council to start looking at those things, the zoning administrative authority and how that's utilized and if it's being utilized too much and leaving your planning commission kind of out in the dark.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Next public comment, please.
My name is Todd Harrison. I am one of the so far surviving endangered residents of Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Much as I do not wish to seem a one-trick pony, the complete lack of any regular business items about caring for seniors, the disabled, or the homeless on tonight's agenda will be my nearly three minutes' worth. The issues unresolved are so familiar to all of us that I think at this point I could tick off bullet points on my fingers while you all nodded. So I speak for my allotted brief time in an effort to break that familiarity and something I learned in my career as an engineer. Have any of you heard of the danger of normalizing risk? A simple explanation of the term is that one, at one point, a conscious decision to accept a risk not normally taken leads to trying it again. Eventually, the risk-taking behavior becomes standard. In this case, it has become more or less, we've done all we can for the problem of whoever this month, even though not enough was taken care of. The next month, it is easier to say and do nothing, and the next month and the one after. Pretty soon, doing nothing or settling for not enough becomes the norm and nothing happens until the problem truly blows up in your face. Just how many have to lose their homes, their lifetime of savings, even their lives for it to become an important problem again? This is still happening today and every day in Fullerton, but has been normalized as the background noise among all the other issues you face up there. Yes, protecting all of Fullerton against crime is important. So is the fire department. So is maintaining the city. So is stopping leaks. So is, well, a lot of big-ticket items. And with each big item and each month, keeping such as I alive becomes less of a priority. Well, I and others in the same situation, not going to go out quietly, so in any month without seeing major work by this council, you can count on hearing from me. I am only the noisy tip of the iceberg, speaking for a lot of this endangered species. Some of us will live long enough to vote, so think carefully and choose to act visibly and decisively on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter. Do we have no other comments? All right. Please.
Hi, my name is Eve Lucas and I'm here to make comments due to a homeless program I'm in at the moment. I've been speaking with Curtis for a while now. I was homeless for six years and I came, became into a shelter, the Coral for Illumination Program. I was hoping that I could finally go forward. I was in abusive relationship, make a long story short. I was promised my own place and I've been living in this home with three men, three male, for three years now, two years. They said I couldn't have my own place because I didn't say I was disabled. Alls I want to do is go forward in my life. I don't want to live around these people. I don't mean to sound judgmental or anything like that. I just want to go forward. I haven't been able to do that. It seems like I have to be mental to be able to get help. I don't even know where to begin. I just, I just would like to get my own place so I can go forward and get a voucher I was promised. And I'm very grateful for my home I have now, but I just, it's, it's been awful. I hate to say it, but it's been really awful. And I am, I should never had gone through that. I just don't want to be around these people anymore. I'm, I want to be moving on. I want to go to work. I haven't been able to do that. I've gone through six cars since I've lived there. Sounds really weird, but it's true. I just, I just, I guess I'm just trying to make comment that I think they're helping the wrong people. I think they should help the people that want the help and I've been asking for the help so I can go forward. You know, I, I might not be disabled or anything like that, but I'm becoming that way. This is all I want to say. I think they're helping the wrong people, the people that don't want the help, the people that want to live on the street. They choose to live out there and I hate to sound judgmental, but it's true. I've been on both sides. I lived in my van for six years downtown Fullerton and I'm grateful, like I said, to have a roof over my head, but I, I just, I didn't live with them out there. I don't want to live with them now. And that's all I can say. I just want to go forward in my life. I don't want to hear about the homeless anymore. I, you know, I love everybody, whatever. And I'm glad they get the help like that, but I just, I'm not disabled. I just want to move on in my life. That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and the veterans also. I, I want to say, you know, first of all, God bless those who are in this war. It could be us. We should try to help them in any way that we can because it could happen to us any day. And I'm very thankful that the pastor, I think he's pastor, but what he was saying about, you know, how it's important for all of us to, you know, to, to, to participate. Also, I'd like to say thanks to Eve for coming. She's speaking for a lot of homeless people that are here that are not getting any attention from, from the Fullerton City Council or from Elimination Foundation or anybody else. Okay? Also, OCTA bus drivers went on strike and they were about to close down Orange County because that's what affects the bus driver, affects the homeless people. It's too bad that the homeless people don't have Teamsters representing them because the bus drivers end up getting about $34 an hour. They end up getting meal and rest periods. So we're going to work very closely with the bus drivers and the Teamsters Union to always support them because we like what they did for their people. And you don't seem to be listening to my voice. I've been speaking for a long, long time, years actually, but that's okay. Mary's Kitchen is also moving. Mary's Kitchen is being kind of harassed because she's a woman and, and nobody would help her out, even though Sharon Corksilver came and spent a day there, very supportive and completely understand the situation, but we haven't did anything to help out Mary's Kitchen and the efforts that Sharon Corksilver went over there and started for us. They want to make her move just because they like picking on homeless people and women. I hate they doing her like that. And when I say they, I'm talking about perhaps Elimination Foundation, Mercy House, and all that little group. Again, our shelters should be walk-up shelters. We should go by the city's municipal code for emergency shelters. And also, I want to do this, I want to pull item number three. Why, I'm up here.
You're asking to pull that a council member pull item number three, sir?
Yes.
All right.
So anyway, thank you guys.
Thank you.
For your time.
No other comments in the room? I will seek to see if we have any public comments on Zoom.
We do have one hand raised.
Please.
Jane Rans, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lucinda, and good evening, Mayor Jung and Council. I just wanted to remind everybody about the next two upcoming redistricting meetings that are going to be hosted by our city council, but they're not going to be on city council nights. So there will be, there are formal public hearings and I'd like to encourage as many people to come and give your input as possible. At the last public hearing, and it was the last one for the Redistricting Advisory Commission, we pretty much heard from all the same voices. It's great that they participated, but it was voices that we'd heard from during the workshops and at previous meetings. So I'm hoping to expand that reach and get more people involved in this process because it affects all of us. So the upcoming meetings are on March 8th at 6:30 in City Council Chamber and then March 29th. So again, they're going to be looking at, or you, the city council, will be looking at the maps and giving your input and asking for changes based on what you hear from the community. And one other little thing for anyone who is looking on the city's website to get the meeting information, if you look at the Legistar calendar, it's going to be listed as a redistricting advisory commission meeting. It's not the redistricting advisory commission, but I think that was just the only way they could get it on the calendar. So you'll find them on March 8th and March 29th. And please participate either in person or through Zoom like I'm doing now. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
No more comments.
Very good. We will bring it back to council for a moment. Mr. City Manager, any responses to any of the issues during public comments?
I don't believe so.
Very well.
If there's any specific items you'd like addressed.
Very good. We will go for council reports and council, we will start with our councilman on Zoom. Anything, sir, this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. No update from me at this time. Thank you.
Very well. Councilman Zara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know these are times when we look at the news and we see horrible things and certainly for myself, I, you know, it takes me, gives me flashbacks for, to when the war in Syria started, my, my country of birth and seeing and having family there and are still there and that war has not ended yet. So there, there are people out there in the world who are struggling and we should always pray for them and make sure that we're paying attention and that, that is not just a newsreel or whatever the latest is on CNN or other media. But there is also good things in this world and I just want to share a really good moment that I've experienced over the weekend. There's a, one of our residents had, had struggled with keeping her place up to code and she was struggling with, you know, multiple things. And I want to thank our chief of police, Chief Dunn, for taking an initiative and spending his, out of his own pocket and also rallying different groups to come and help. The, I want to thank also the Police Officers Association for pitching in and providing also some help and, and some labor as well and building fences and whatnot. Also, EV Free, OC United, and Cornerstone Bible Church, all of them rallied to help an individual who needed help and, and that is what community is. So there, there are horrible things in this world, but there are also really good people out there doing good things. So I just wanted to share that and thank you very much.
Very good. Councilman Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just want to again thank the police chief, as Mr. Zara mentioned, for just stepping up and helping our, our community and, and all the, you know, the POA, the chief and EV Free and, and anyone else who showed up there, thank you. And it's a sign of what we as Fullertonians can do when we put our minds to it. And with that, there was a request to pull item three, so we'll go ahead and I'll request that.
Very well, sir. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to put on the record concerns about an agenda item that would provide some amount of local control regarding SB 9 and SB 10. This has been delayed beyond what we thought would be the case. It's complicated in part two because we've had a number of planning commission meetings canceled and so we haven't had much regularity with most of our committees for a while now. I think we're missing, we're, we're not hitting on all cylinders at all. I don't know whether you or staff could enlighten me on that, on that matter, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
We will certainly ask that of staff, sir. March 1st this evening in Korea is Samui, literally is 3/1. It's the date commemorating when Korean people chose freedom and independence over oppression and colonial occupation. As Korean-Americans in our community commemorate this significant date, it is not lost on me that right now in Eastern Europe, a free and sovereign Ukraine and its people are fighting the whims and will of a tyrant. Tyranny anywhere is a threat to freedom everywhere. We, as free Americans, should be mindful of that fact and stand with the people of the Ukraine. So I would ask our council and our staff to, if it's certainly possible, to have lighting in front of City Hall commemorate the flag of Ukraine and be in those colors so those in our community can understand that we stand with the Ukrainian people. Thank you. We have appointments this, this evening. I think the first is one of my own, I believe. Madam City Clerk, my appointee for the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Advisory Committee is Ms. Ilsa Miranda. Not enough representatives come out of District 5. Certainly not enough women of color sit on these committees, so I'm honored to make that appointment. Mr. Mayor Protem, you have an appointment as well, I see.
Yes, for the library board, I'd like to reappoint, continue the appointment of Sean Payden.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, is there anything further that we have to do outside of ratify these appointments?
Take public comments and then ratify.
Very well. Any public comments on this matter?
And I do see one hand raised in Zoom. Donald Lovver, are you?
It's your mayor, Protem.
There you are.
That's for the library.
Donald Lovver, did you want to comment on the appointments, Donald? I'm going to take that as a no.
All right, very well. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Did I have a motion and a second?
Excuse me. We missed a step here.
I moved to ratify the appointments.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next, we have a consent calendar. Councilmember, pull item number three.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir, please.
Can I ask the, the person who wanted this, if he just wants to make a comment or he wants a full discussion of it? Perhaps he can make the comment now if that's the case. Mr. Gamble, would you want to make a comment on this or do you want us to do a whole?
Considering it's quite a public, I would like the public to give us one hour with millions of dollars.
Fair enough.
It's not for me.
All right, very well. Councilman Silva's pulled item number three. I would ask that, for a motion to move the balance.
So moved. So, second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, would you be kind enough as to call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And if it's all right with you, Councilman Silva, can we address item number three at the end, sir?
Sure.
Very well. We'll go on to regular business as we have no public hearings this evening. Yes, when the item comes up.
Oh, okay.
All right? Facility Condition Assessment Cost Estimate Update. Director McWade.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor. The item in front of you this evening is a Facility Condition Assessment Update, and... Okay. Perfect. We do have a presentation that'll show up, and I'll begin talking because I'm sure it'll catch up with me. Basically, we're going to be discussing a condition assessment that was done several years ago. In part, it's in advance of the budget, but also there have been some discussions of doing a future facility use study where we look at the, basically, the future needs of not only staff but also operational needs of the city and determine what's the best use of all of our facilities. This information will be provided to any consultant that we would select, and they would utilize it ultimately in their recommendations. So, in 2018, the city hired EMG to do an assessment of 20 of our facilities. We have approximately 108 facilities. The 20 that were selected are some of the largest ones. It's City Hall, it's PD, it's Community Center, and when the, if the presentation comes up, if not, it's in the council item. It's one of the attachments. Basically, it shows all 20 of the facilities that were evaluated. And what they did is they looked at the lifecycle costs of things like HVAC, of the electrical lighting that was there, and they made proactive maintenance recommendations and investment recommendations. And within that study, it identified approximately $80 million of costs that need to be invested in our facilities over a 20-year period. As we know, the pandemic has affected not only market rates but also supply chain issues, and as a result, staff has grown those cost estimates to reflect those changes. And so the new number of the 20-year study is essentially $86 million. And we're on, I think, slide three or four? If you... Oh, one more, please? Thank you. So this gives an idea of the information that was provided by the, by the EMG consultant. And basically, you can see it identifies it by facility and then shows what was the immediate need. So in fiscal year 19, they were indicating that we, from a proactive maintenance standpoint, should be providing $974,000 investment. Then the following, in three years, it was a $6.3 million investment, and then an $11.6 million investment. So you could see within those 20 facilities, the need is very great, and five years is 2024. What the city actually sets aside in terms of facility capital replacement is $540,000. So that $540,000 is utilized to address these facilities but also the other 108, or the other 80-some-odd facilities that we have, in addition to responding to needs that weren't addressed in this study, such as recently the Muckenthaler had a stage that had some failures on it, and we had to repair that. And so that $540,000, as you can tell, is, it's not adequate for the needs that have been identified. And I would like to say, just like the roads and just like almost everything that the City Council is facing, it is not an issue that was developed by the City Council. And I would like to mention that we appreciate your support in the creative financing solutions that we'll talk about later. Next slide, please. So we did a little closer look at the City Hall and PD, and so the three-year, basically, for the first five years of investment, we were looking at almost $5.3 million between the two facilities, things like elevators that need to be replaced, full painting of, of the exterior of PD. So all of that total is the $5.3 million. You can see the breakdown, 4.5 roughly was for City Hall, and 809,000 was for PD. If you don't mind going to the next slide. Since that time, we actually have done additional work that was outside of what was identified at EMG and with funding that had previously been set aside in some cases. So we created storage in, in part to move filing systems from office spaces so that we could utilize that office space. Came in particularly handy when the pandemic required us to, to do some social distancing. We also repaired flooring on both second floor and Law Library that was not originally anticipated. And then I mentioned that large investment that needs to be done in our elevator systems, since we can't afford it. We tried to extend the life, so we had to provide $45,000 in order to extend the life of those elevators, and we are continuing to do that until we can afford to invest in it. And then also, from a PD perspective, EMG was looking at things it could see and looking at lifespans. But, but at the Police Department, we had a sewer main failure that caused us to redirect funding in the amount of $45,000. Next slide, please. We also asked the departments to look when we were doing kind of a deeper dive in City Hall and PD. We have done some updates to City Hall in terms of social distancing and providing for spacing, and we also asked PD if there were additional things that they could identify. And so we have had leaks in the locker areas that have caused severe damage. In addition to them being aged and needing to be updated, we need to identify almost $1.8 million of additional improvements, and this is the list. There are two dates identified, fiscal year 22, '23, fiscal year 21, '22. Those are really the only projects that we have funded at this moment. So again, we're looking for creative ways to find funding, and one of those projects identified is that. The other ones that need to be done, main police building paint, the courtyard revitalization, we've applied for grants. We're waiting to hear if we receive them. We don't anticipate being able to get granting for all of this, all of this need in the Police Department. Next slide, please. We did, when I mentioned, we appreciate Council's support in creative financing solutions. The energy efficiency project that we are underway with will actually provide some of those improvements that EMG was recommending, and the offsetting energy savings will fund the project. And so this slide just shows some of those projects that will be done through that, that Naresco project. Next slide. We also, in addition to do facility capital repair and replacement and upgrades, we do ongoing maintenance. So over the last three years, within our work order system, we've identified $3.5 million of that repair money for facilities alone, not streetlights and other things that that team works on. And of that amount, almost $1 million was dedicated to City Hall and Police Department. Next slide. So basically, we're bringing this in front of you just because this Council has never had an opportunity to see the EMG study that was essentially completed in advance of, of your becoming a Council, and also because we're facing coming into the budget season. And we also will potentially do a facility user study. And as I mentioned before, this information is very useful when they make their ultimate recommendations, should Council choose to move forward on that. And I'm stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions at this moment from Council?
Yes, if I may?
Councilman Silva.
Yeah. On, on the Muckenthaler for their state?
Yes.
I thought we had kind of separated from them and that they were running their own show, and we were not liable for anything?
That's a great question. With most of our facility contracts, while they do the, some minor maintenance, and they, they do ongoing maintenance of, for example, the lawns, and they do the custodial at the opera, at that center, it's ultimately our building. So we have invested not only for the stage, but also we had to replace the doors, the windows need replacement, and all of those are historic structures, but ultimately, it's the city's responsibility for those major upgrades.
And then one more question. On, on the list of, of items, there was one, Independence Park called for 115,000. Do you have, I don't know if you have the answer, what did that entail?
I don't recall, but we have all the studies, and I can, I'm glad to give that information and include it even in a community outreach piece if we would like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Good. Councilman Dunlap, do you have anything, sir? Very well. Anybody else? Okay. We'll take public comments on this item. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment? Seeing none in the chambers, do we have any on Zoom?
We have two hands raised in Zoom.
Very well.
Jane Riefer, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you, Lucinda. Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have two comments. First is, and these are not buildings, but these are sometimes part of our facilities, and that is the trees that we have at a lot of the different parks and buildings throughout our city. And we're finding out that there just isn't enough money to take care of the proper maintenance for the trees and also to do some, in some cases, there needs to be some remediation so that the trees won't turn into a risk problem. And I just would like to make sure that in addition to all the money that this, this study indicates needs to be found or used, that it also could include the trees, because I think those are sometimes left off. And then also, I wanted to mention that I followed the EMG report, which I thought was pretty comprehensive, on the Hunt Library, but I don't believe that they were aware, if, if, I'm digging in my memory right now, I don't believe they were aware that the building was on the National Register or local landmark. And so they didn't use an analysis that included the historic aspects, so I'd like to make sure that it happens, especially on the police station and so forth, that there's a recognition or an overlay of the historic sensitivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
And Jane Rand, you should be able to unmute.
Thanks once again. I noticed on this list a need to, for maintenance at Maple Community Center, and I'm questioning that because it's close to the public. So maybe seeing it on the list?
Okay.
Sorry, I just... Okay. Am I muted or unmuted right now?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay. Did you hear me before?
Yes, you're speaking about Maple.
Okay. Yeah, there's just weird stuff going on on my screen. It's now asking me to join as a panelist, or stay, or stay as an attendee. How about that? Anyways, yeah, so at Maple Community Center, it's been close to the public. It's a part of our community that's often neglected, and I would like to see a prioritization of opening that. And if there's any discussion about funding, if maybe it's close with a sense for the health and safety of the community and the city workers, if there's some problem, I think that probably ought to be prioritized, just because there's a real need there. So I just wanted to put a shout out there for Maple Community Center getting some love.
Thank you. There are no further comments. We'll bring this item back to Council. It is a receive and file item. Are there any further comments from Council? Mr. Mayor of Fullerton, please.
Yes, we, we've received these updates in the past when I was on the Council, and they tend to work their way into our, our capital plans, our capital project plans. So for us, it's been largely not so visible in terms of how the budget gets dedicated to that. I do see a couple items here which have really popped up beyond what my expectations would be. But what I wanted to comment on, Mr. Mayor, is what's really missing from this is a while back, you had requested a utilization study and a report on same. And through these pandemic years, we certainly have had a lot of low activity and shutdown number of city services and a number of changes as well. So it seems to me that that needs to dovetail with this information so that we can make the right decisions.
I certainly would agree, sir.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then we will thank Director McWade for the timely and informative presentation.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just reply to the, one of the comments that was made about Maple Center, that is actually going to be on your agenda at your next meeting. This is one of the two neighborhood centers which you have directed staff to negotiate agreements on, and one of those agreements will include Maple Center, and that'll be back on your agenda March 15th.
Well. We will move on to item six. It is Southern California Association of Governments, General Assembly Delegates. We are to choose a, a delegate and an alternate this evening. I suppose we will take, oh, I think, Madam City Clerk, is there a presentation that you need to make?
There's no presentation. I'll just note that this is a May, I don't have the page in front of me, May 5th, event in Palm Desert.
Very well.
And happens every year on your agenda.
And we will now hear public comment on this item? See no, no one in chambers, no one on Zoom? Then we will bring this back to Council for any nominations or discussion or suggestions.
I'd like to, I haven't been able to attend one of these in a while, so I'd like to attend the, the General Assembly if I, if I may. So I'll nominate myself, I guess.
Any other nominations from the floor?
I would be interested.
All right, very well. So we have both Mayor Protem Whitaker and Councilman Silva. Should we just take a straw poll? Is that the easiest way to do this?
We could treat this like nominations, and you can just state your preferred delegate as we go through.
Sounds efficient. Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. Councilmember Dunlap.
Whitaker.
Councilmember Silva.
Silva.
Councilmember Zara.
Silva.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Whitaker.
And Mayor Jung.
I think Councilman Silva was our rep last year. Am I, am I mistaken on that? I should have asked this question.
Two years ago.
I was the alternate. I do believe you were the rep last year.
Was I the rep?
You were, yeah. I was, I was the alternate, and...
Obviously wasn't a very good rep. Thank God I had you as an alternate. Mayor Protem Whitaker it is.
And then, speaking of alternates, if you could designate an alternate?
With Silva. He'll be a better alternate this year than I suppose he was last year, because I was terrible as the, the delegate. My apologies. Very well. Onto item number seven on the agenda. It's Police Towing Services Agreement with Pacific Towing. And we have Lieutenant Bogart. Would you be kind enough as to make that presentation, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Lieutenant Tony Bogart. So this is, this is our, a return for review for Council recommendation of the contract with the, for Police Towing Services with Pacific Towing Incorporated. It's a little bit of background, you know, actually, back in 2020, Council had approved the RFP that was established and had selected Anaheim Fullerton Tow as a tow provider, and also had directed staff to, or allow Pacific Towing and Hadley Tow to be reinspected by the staff at the Fullerton Police Department by a third-party vendor. And in December 2020, the Council was presented with the reinspection of both of those, and Council had decided on a trial period for Pacific Towing. Hadley Tow would be allowed, but they were on the suspension list because of, of some criminal, criminal proceedings that were, were pending and charges filed on that, on that company. Moving on into January of 2021, Pacific Towing, it actually, we actually came into an agreement with a six-month, actually, initial six-month contract so they can provide services based on some reviews. As, as come July of '21, the term was extended for, for one month again, so staff can do another facility check of Pacific Tow. And, and finally, in August of, August 3rd of '21, the Council had approved a six-month tow with Pacific Towing up until February 17. Because of Council agendas and things, there was another 30, 30-day extension that was granted on February 10th of this year to, to get to this meeting here. Some of the, some of the things that were required based on the, those, these inspections with Pacific Tow was, was the storage requirement deficiencies that were found. Just as a reminder, each tow, franchise tow is required to be able to store Fullerton vehicles that are, that are stored or impounded based on Fullerton Police Department calls for up to 100, 100 vehicles, two 80-foot trucks for seven days, and also a, a 180-foot truck for long-term as well. This is all based on the, on the tow guidelines that are established and approved by Council in 2019. On December 28th of '21, Police Department staff did do an additional inspection of Pacific Tow at their location on, on Coronado Street and the city of Anaheim. Based on this inspection, it, it, it actually found... Based on this inspection, it actually found that Pacific Towing met and actually exceeded some of the requirements that are set forth by the tow policy and corrected the storage issue. One of the ways they had done that was to, they ended up purchasing another yard in the city of Anaheim where they could store other vehicles that were not Fullerton Police towed vehicles. They are in contract with other law enforcement agencies in the area. With that, with that agreement and that establishment, it allowed the tow, the tow yard to be, to have plenty of room for the Fullerton vehicles and met the criterias of the, of the, of the tow guidelines. One of the other deficiencies that were found were the lack of Class A drivers that Pacific Towing had. And during that inspection, they found that they actually made some quite improvements in obtaining drivers with Class A licenses, including with all the necessary endorsements of doubles and triples hazmat and tank endorsements that are required for some of the vehicles that could be towed. There, the operator actually has two other operators, two other drivers are in the process right now, and they're continually searching for new, new, new drivers. Based on, on the staff inspection, it, actually Pacific Towing's been, they've been persistent in trying to make sure that they're trying to get their drivers. And in talking to the operator, Mr. Fragali, he's been, he's been making many attempts to hire new truck, new drivers. But he's run into some difficulties finding quality, or actually appropriately qualified applicants. So staff's recommending that, that the council authorize the city manager in, in actually having an agreement that would go, would really extend till June of 2025 with the option to extend the term with two, additional two-year period. And if approved, this contract with Pacific Towing would mirror the one for Anaheim Fullerton Tow. So that means everything would end up at the same time. So staff can be, could focus completely on any evaluations without having to spread that timeout. And I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you very much, Lieutenant, for your insightful presentation. Seeing no questions, we will take public comment on this matter. Any members of the public wishing to comment? I don't see any members in chambers, so any on Zoom?
We have no hands raised in Zoom.
Very well. We will bring it back to council. I will entertain a further discussion. Okay, we have a motion from the Mayor Protem. We've got a second from council.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I just want to thank the police for their due diligence and carry not this. I know it's, the towing is always a big, not dilemma, but an issue here with. So thank you for getting us squared away, and I'll second that and.
Very good, sir. Madam City Clerk, what did you call? Councilman Zara seconded, I bet, I guess. So we'll have a third from Councilman Silva.
It's getting easier without the mask on to get it straight, but. Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Our next item is the 2022 Safe and Sane Fireworks Sales Lottery. This is an item that we are bringing back, just to have a small clarification to the language. Madam City Clerk, you're welcome to make a presentation if you wish, but I don't know that it's necessary. It's pretty.
You took about 95% of the presentation already. It's just to clarify the language of the five groups that are going to get segmented in the lottery for youth sports. You want to clarify, well, the suggestion is to clarify that to youth partner groups, youth sports partner groups.
Very well. Are there any questions from council at this moment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Zara.
So, so was, if I understand, there are five of these local groups now that have have spots that are allocated for them within the 15th, within the 15 spots, or how does, right?
Correct. Five of the 15 lottery spots are currently reserved for youth sports. The proposal is to reserve those for youth sports partner groups.
Oh, I see. So, so we do have it already as five, but now we're just defining what those, who those five.
Yes, it's narrowing the scope a little bit about what those five are.
So they would be the local partner groups, basically?
Just wanted. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Silva.
So since we're going forward, and I know that this is a big fundraiser for any group, and I'm familiar with the requirements, and when I was in 1670, when I was trying to help this local youth group, we had to deal with these requirements. And, and we never were able really to figure out what, how we verify the 80% rule in terms of, you know, the Fullerton resident player percentage of at least 80%. So I think going forward, if we're gonna, in essence, give them a really great chance to raise funding, I'd like to see us somehow verify or do a survey, something to make sure that these groups do have 80% of the, of their players do reside in Fullerton. Just because that way, you know, there's, I think, we have eight total partner groups. And I would hate to have, give someone that opportunity and then maybe they don't have the 80%. Because it is tough to get 80% of participants from Fullerton in some cases. So I'd like to see some sort of mechanism. And I know where, you know, that might cost money. So I would, you know, even bring back an item where we use some of the funding from the sale of fireworks to maybe do, I don't know, biannual, triannual survey, audit, whatever you want to call it, to make sure they've got the 80% locked down.
Certainly something for the Parks and Rec Commission to go over.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can you comment?
There is actually a verification process, generally utilizing a utility bill or something like that to verify the residency provision.
Councilman Dunlap, I saw you had a comment, sir.
Yes, yeah, first, thanks for, you know, thanks for helping me to get this agenda is obviously, I think it was, for me, it was important to this council, and that's why we took the steps to, I think, really right the ship to make sure that five of these youth sports groups or the partner groups could in fact qualify for and receive the, you know, via lottery, this opportunity to sell the fireworks. I think it's, you know, I guess what I learned in this process is that, although it was clear in the spirit of the discussion, it wasn't something that actually made it into, you know, the actual ordinance. And so I appreciate this getting brought forward so that we can in fact clarify. Because I think that's, that's part of, you know, this, I guess, this ever-evolving or changing world of youth sports. You know, there are many nonprofit groups who are in it to serve the community and serve the children. And there are also people in it trying to make a buck. And so I think it's important to make sure that these, you know, nonprofits who are truly in it, you know, not to pay staff, but in fact to serve the community and serve the kids of the community, they're able to, you know, have a greater opportunity, I think, to receive the funds via these fireworks sales. So I appreciate you getting this brought forward, and hopefully we can approve it tonight.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. We have public comment. So let's see if there's any commenters in chambers. I don't see any.
We have one hand raised in Zoom.
Please.
And MM, you should be able to unmute.
All right, I think I figured out how to operate Zoom here. Hey, this is Munish calling, and I wanted to say thank you for you guys putting a little bit more focus on the sports user groups. Having been a former president of one, this funding greatly helps Fullerton residents and its youth. The fact that you're gonna earmark five spots specifically for sports user groups alone is a huge move. And I really do thank you for that. The other thing I think that Councilman Silva brought up is a very valid point about the residency requirement. I think that definitely needs to be verified, because if they're just self-reported numbers, anybody can say they've got it, whether or not they're using a water bill or a utility bill. If the city isn't verifying, it's hard to know if it's real or not. The last thing I would say is that there are extra groups out there. I think there's eight currently that are partner groups. So I would assume that five automatically get it, and the other three would be put into the lottery for the other spots. Maybe give some consideration. If those groups are providing a valuable service to Fullerton youth, that maybe you increase the number from five or consider that at a, at a later date. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Again, with no further public comment, and I thank our good Councilman Zara for not allowing him to skip that step. I will certainly entertain a motion.
I do have some small questions.
Of course, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Just to clarify, the Speaker, Mr. Munish's question, so the eighth are going to be competing for the five spots, correct?
If all eight apply, and norm, I haven't seen, there's one group in there that I haven't seen an application for in the whole time we've been doing fireworks. But theoretically, and I have a feeling that eight's not always a number every year either. It could be more, it could be less. But however many youth sports partner groups choose to apply for the lottery, those would all compete for those five spots.
Right, so they will have a chance to compete for the five spots.
Right, the intent was not to roll them into the other 10 if they didn't get a spot in those original five.
And then we do have, and this is, this is with moving this item, we will have that residency verification?
They are vetted through the Park and Recreation Department already as youth sports partner groups, so yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, and I would like to see, like Mr. Munish said, I know he's, he, he and I worked together when he was President of the Rangers. And I would like to see if we can do, again, maybe every other year, some sort of more detailed certification, just to make sure they're there. Again, I, I mean, I've been, haven't been a basketball coach and sophomore youth coach. I can appreciate this, and I will like to see these groups, you know, raise the fund they need. I mean, youth sports is not cheap anymore. But I would also like to make sure that we have a really good process, and it's, we can verify it, we can prove it so, so that we're rewarding our residents. So perhaps we, I can have a whole point. Staff come back with some sort of a plan for enough committee meeting to kind of give us a process to verify, maybe not on an annual basis, but maybe every two years, just to make sure we're all, we're rewarding the right people.
Well, I think it's certainly something that the Parks and Rec.
But that also, can I just add? I mean, you guys are missing the point. Part of that is built into this youth partner designation that was excluded before. I mean, that, that's part of the point. Previously, that was excluded, which is why we took the steps to do that. It was omitted. We brought it back, you know, perhaps we can seek something above and beyond. But that, that was the point in bringing this back at this point, was to get a little further clarification there.
Right, so to, to the.
Above and beyond that, certainly that can be done.
To, to the councilman's point, the steps that the organizations have to take in order to be in compliance as a, a partner group is to verify that 80/20 residency. So it's almost we're doing now a dual step that I find is unnecessary. What I would champion your cause on, sir, is that the Parks and Rec Commission take a deep dive look at how that's being done and what could be done better. That's certainly worthy of that.
Well, yeah, and I like to.
I don't know that it's worth coming here again.
I would like to bring you here, because again, I mean, I don't mind supporting these groups, and I think we should. But I just want to make sure that if it is an 80% requirement, that they're meeting that. And that if the Parks and Rec is gonna take a deeper look into it, I'd like them to bring it back to us and kind of explain to us and to the other groups what they're looking for, what they look for, and to verify it. Because you're right, Mr. Dunlap, I mean, we should be supporting these groups, and that's not my intent not to support them. My intent to support the groups that are abiding by all the five requirements. And I know that, again, when I worked with a previous group, there were some tendencies to, to show a, and I had to stop them from showing the same utility bill twice. So I mean, not that these groups are doing it, but I want to, I would rather be sure than sorry.
Again, something for the commission to look at. I think they, you know, if they find some things and bring it to us, I think that's the, the necessary steps to take. In any case, if there's a motion, I'm happy to entertain it.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the table. I made that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And the next item on the agenda is our 2022 Legislative Platform. And I believe the person making the presentation this evening is Ms. Levis.
Yes.
Please.
Got it? Perfect. All right, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is an update to the city's legislative platform. So some quick history and context, the platform was brought to you in 2021 in July of last year. It is based upon existing city priority policy statements. And as staff, we will continue to bring forward the platform on an annual basis, providing updates to the council for consideration. So the platform's goals, just a refresher, is to have staff efficiently be able to respond with letters of positions of support and positions of opposition. Items not addressed in the platform will obviously be back, brought forth to the city council for consideration. And the platform is guided by three guiding principles: to preserve local control, promote fiscal stability, and support funding opportunities. So there have been several additions to the 2021 platform for 2022, all within kind of these main themes. So they are to oppose measures that shift local city funds to county, state, and federal governments, to support programs, policies, and measures that seek to promote enhancing our aging water infrastructure, continued support for COVID-19 relief funding, to monitor legislation that seeks to expand enforcement capabilities of the state for RENA compliance, and to support additional funding for illegal dumping and homeless that can't make cleanup. Our legislative advocates, Townsend Public Affairs, have requested that the council provide direction on two priority policy statements within the platform. The first is if the council desires to include the supportive funding to acquire additional land within West Coyote Hills, as well as to oppose any further funding for the California High-Speed Rail Project so that the funding can be reallocated to fix our local streets and infrastructure. Also included in your staff report is the Legislative Matrix. That matrix is provided at the beginning of the month, and it shows the progression of where bills are on the floor, current positions that the city has taken as it matches our platform, and so that's for your review. And so the recommendation for you this evening is to provide direction on those two points that were on the previous slides, and then to adopt the 2022 Legislative Platform. And then third, to authorize the mayor or Mayor Protem in the mayor's absence to sign policy and position letters within the platform guidelines. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from any council members? Councilman Silva.
Yes, I had a question on our, on our legislative, what do we call it here, our listing. We had opposed SB 322, and I hate to say this, can someone remind me why we were opposing that? That was one of the questions I have.
No, thank you, and thank you for bringing that to staff's attention. I went back into our kind of historical archives to see if we had submitted any letters of opposition or support for SB 222. I could not find any, and so I pinged Townsend Public Affairs to see if any direction from the city council was given to oppose. We did not find any historical records for this. So we believe it's, it's simply a clerical error on the matrix that someone accidentally clicked oppose on that. So it should be watched.
Yeah, we're a water rate assistance program. I think we would want to support that. So, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council at this moment? Seeing none, we will seek public comment? Seeing no one in chambers, or, all right, Mr. Harris, that's fine, Mr. Harrison. Take your time, sir. Are there any comments on Zoom? Okay. Mr. Harris, you are the sole public comment, sir. Floor is yours.
I'll make the best of it. My name, of course, is still Todd Harrison. Most of you know of, or are even related to, the state law that just went into effect in January about preventing predatory increases against mobile homeowners that rent their space in a mobile home park. Due to the realities of the political give and take, that law was limited to apply to only one MHP in California. Fortunate for me, it was Rancho La Paz. We were the most organized and largest group Mr. Saunders attacked, and are grateful that after years of effort, he had his first defeat of any kind. For the sake of the rest of Fullerton's at-risk residents, I'm asking that this council. support the effort to amend or replace AB 978 with protections for other mobile home residents. Besides Rancho La Paz, there are five other MHPs in Fullerton. There are more like Mr. Saunders out there, even though he has managed to become the poster child for predation on the elderly. Please make this topic an important part of the 2022 Fullerton Legislative Platform. That's at least you can do without having to face Saunders' legal threats, as his issue is now with the entire state. He is in fact suing the state, but adding even one more mobile home park to those being protected will invalidate his case. I'm here tonight to urge you to do the same for the rest of Fullerton. You missed a chance to speak up and protect us when the issue first arose. You can redeem the past history of the former Fullerton City Council, the resistant money that Saunders gives so generously in donations, and do the right thing this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll bring this back to council. Any further discussion on the matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item to move the recommendations.
Very well, is there a second?
I'll second.
Very good. Mr. Mayor Protem, do you have a comment, sir?
We need to provide input on those two items.
Yes, we do.
I would recommend delete and maintain.
Say again?
In this order, delete and maintain.
All right. So we'll entertain a motion to move the item with the deletion on the first item, is that what it is, sir?
Yes.
And maintaining the second item.
Right, to reappropriate some of the infrastructure monies to local roads and infrastructure, so maintain that one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sorry, I'm slow. So on the first item, the Parks and Rec.
Coyote Hills.
Coyote Hills, well, it's under Parks and Rec, right? Funding for Coyote Hills, what is the change you want to make to that?
He wants to delete that.
Delete the whole item?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then on the other one, the Public Works?
Maintain it.
Okay.
Maintain to redirect high-speed rail into local.
As is, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Quick question on why, why are we deleting the second item, the first item on Coyote Hills? Could I get a, what is the action of deleting it? What would happen there?
We're pretty much at the end of that road at this point. Same reason that we're updating the rest of the list.
Well, then I would make a substitute motion to move with the two items as is.
Very well. Is there a second on the substitute motion?
Well, the as-is leaves it in limbo, either to maintain, edit, or delete. So you're saying keep them intact?
Keep both of them, yes.
Okay. Got you.
Sorry, yeah.
All right, is there a second? Seeing none, I will offer the second. Okay, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, on the substitute motion first, to keep both as is.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
I will abstain.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
So two-two, so it does not pass.
And back to the original motion. Obviously, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Zara.
No.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
No.
So that was three noes.
I suppose we could do this part and parcel to make it a little easier to digest for everyone. We can move the legislative platform, and staff recommendation on adopting the legislative platform, and three, authorizing the mayor or the mayor pro tem to sign policy and positions. And we'll just, I suppose we'll give direction on those two items that are in limbo, either at a later time or later on in the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if, if, if we can separate these items, it would make it easier for me.
Let's go ahead and do that, sir.
Yes, thank you, and we could make even the decision on those two items.
Very, very well.
If they are taken separately, maybe.
Let's do that, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion on just the moving the legislative platform forward, items one, two, three, and we'll separate the Coyote Hills and the infrastructure. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move that.
Very well, is there a second?
As long as, I mean, so we bring the others back at just a later.
That's correct, sir. That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I'll second then.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes 401.
All right, so that brings us back to each of the items separately. We'll take on Coyote Hills first. Is there any discussion?
It's my understanding we are taking those at a later point in time.
Do you want to address it today? What's the council's will?
I think we can address it today.
All right, very well.
I'll make a motion to keep it in.
Keep it in? All right, very good.
That is the seeking funding, additional funding.
Very good.
Yes.
So there's a motion from Councilman Zara on Coyote Hills. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
And that's to include it in our platform, okay?
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
So three-two passes.
And now we have the infrastructure. I'll seek a motion to move that forward.
You know, here's the deal, since I'm remote unfortunately this evening, and don't have the benefit of having the, you know, full staff agenda available other than the tablet that I've got with me, so I'm not prepared to make any kind of a decision on the infrastructure. Clearly, I think the infrastructure is the most important part, you know, specifically the roads and streets, or lack of attention thereof, and so, you know, that should be a priority, but, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to have to abstain on a further vote tonight, unless I've, you know, because I don't have the benefit of having all of that with me physically to review.
Understood, sir. Any other further comments or discussions on the matter?
Yeah, so this, from what I understand, is just to oppose any further high-speed rail money and redirect that money to infrastructure, to fix, funding, reallocated to fix our local roads and infrastructure. So it would just be saying no to high-speed rail and put any of that funding into roads and infrastructure.
Can we get that, can somebody, is somebody able to put that, Lucinda, is it possible for you to put that on the screen that I can review? It's unfortunately short on battery here. Don't know if I can pull it up. See.
Hang on, we have to share screen again.
While that's happening, I will certainly entertain a motion on the item from anyone on council.
Yes, I would move it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Very well.
Who was the motion I was playing?
Motion from the mayor pro tem, second from Councilman Silva.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Dunlap, have you had an opportunity to see, sir?
You know, I thought the screen was going to be shared, I'm not.
I don't think we have that available to share.
What we can do if you'd like.
Or can I, can somebody read the motion?
Yes, we will, we will read it verbatim, we'll have the, Madam City Clerk, can you read the item verbatim, please?
We're going to let the staff most familiar with this read it verbatim for us.
Yeah, and again, not the whole report, just if there's a summary to.
Okay. Or I can read it. It is to oppose any further funding for the California High Speed Rail project, and to see if that funding can be reallocated to fix our local roads and infrastructure.
Okay, great. Yeah.
All right, that said, if there's no further discussion or questions on the matter, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Abstain.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes 401.
Very good, and we will go back to our consent calendar. Councilman Silva had pulled item number three. Who will be making that presentation this evening?
I'll be presenting, Mayor.
Director Fritzel.
Thank you so much.
Please.
Before you tonight is a request for amendment number one with Illumination Foundation for the Shelter Services at 3535 Commonwealth. As a little background, on November 16th, 2021, the City Council authorized the use of 1.272 million of ARPA funds to continue supporting the Fullerton residents at the facility. At that time, by the time we signed the professional service agreement, it was December 15th, 2021. But it was determined that when the funding from the original January 19th, 2021 funds were expended September 1st, that they maintained and did not kick anybody out of the shelter. So with that, they were providing services to our residents. Staff has verified that they were, you know, placed in there by our, by our either homeless case managers or police liaison officers. So Illumination Foundation came to the staff. We met with them several times regarding the funding of that time period from September 2nd to December 15th. In looking at the budget, even with going back in funding from September 2nd forward, we still do have enough funds to go through the end of June 30th, and not, you know, take any issues with having any of our shelter residents removed from the facility. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this amendment, and staff is here for any questions you may have.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from council at this time? All right, very well. We will entertain public comment on this matter. Mr. Gamble, you had asked for public comment, this is your opportunity, sir. This was your item, sir. I would expect you to be better prepared, I suppose.
Hello again. Excuse me, my name is Eve Lucas. We're on a positive note, I'm not being ungrateful for my roof over my head. I think it's, the money has been spent, not the way it should be, actually. You can't just gather up a bunch of people off the street and put them in a house and say, there, you're on your own now. It doesn't work that way. If this person needs this kind of help, or if they're all, they need help because they're mental or whatever, I think they should be, I mean, I believe they've been there for these people, but there's no reason for me to have to be mixed in with it. So they need some kind of manager or something to watch over these homes, these houses that they have, each individual house. Because I've been doing, feeling like I, excuse me, I've been doing that myself automatically because that's how I am, and that's how I have to be, you know, directing everybody what to do, making schedules, whatever. So I think the money should be spent in a different way, it's not being handled the right, correct way. They need more beds. I didn't have a bed for a long time in my room due to bedbugs, whatever. Not me, I'm a very clean person. But I had to wait for my bed for a week, I had to sleep on the couch, I live with three mouths. I'm, like I said, I'm very grateful for my roof over my head, they have been, you know, there for me for that. I just feel like the money's not being spent right. They should look into the people more, what they're doing, you know, instead of just saying, okay, here you go, you're on your own, you got a house. Okay, done, you know? And I've been through a lot there, and once been there to help me out, I'd watch these three guys that are just sitting there being enabled, when they should be getting up, trying to go to work, trying to get a normal life going, but instead, they're enabling them. They just sit there every day in their room, don't do nothing, we come and help them, ignore me, when I'm just trying to go forward. That's my story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Gamble.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, again, Curtis Gamble, activist for the veterans and the homeless. Tonight, I'd like to talk about item three, which is the Illumination Foundation funding. First of all, the million point, the million point two, I don't think that Illumination Foundation should receive this money. I don't think that the Illumination Foundation has provided the service for the 308 homeless people here in Fullerton. I think that money should go to Mary's Kitchen over in the city of Orange, where people are welcome every single day, and they're able to, be able to use this money for housing, get vouchers for hotels, or whatever else they need. Let me just read what I have on the paper. Elimination, Elimination Foundation funding should be for beds, which would include tiny homes, like what LA has. Funding, again, funding for the churches, this money could go to the churches, a 1,200 could go to the churches. From that list of 28 churches that I pass out, the churches in Fullerton and the rest of the Orange County, the Fullerton churches are served, are serviced by a lot of young people, serving the homeless, they do way better than the Elimination Foundation. Funding should also, again, go to Mary's Kitchen, local churches, OCTA bus drivers. They are the ones that are serving the homeless right now. Also, when OCTA bus drivers went out on strike for meals and rest periods, that was also representing the homeless. They have the same needs, and they have the same fight, we're with them. And that money should go to them because they are the ones who are serving the homeless every single day. They need free bus passes, the homeless people. Fullerton City Lights apartment, where I live at, is our navigation center. I recruit more people to move in there. They're, this service, that, that apartment should be our navigation center, because that's what we want in a navigation center. People come there all the time and get information and whatever service they need. Public restrooms, since I'm talking about it, downtown Fullerton, we need the public restrooms for, for the people, that's, and the homeless people are the ones that would be using that besides the OCTA bus drivers, as well as the public. And the sidewalks over on Harbor Commonwealth, we should have our local buses when they come through downtown Fullerton to a park, I mean, to be able to pick up people, you know, not having a building coming all the way out in the streets, that would better serve our homeless and the residents also. And also, free bus passes for the homeless, and no for that money going to Elimination Foundation, that is robbery, there's no way we should do that. Don't not rob the homeless people.
Mr. Gamble, may I ask you a question, sir? What city is Mary's Kitchen in that you advocate for?
Mary's Kitchen is in the city of Orange.
Right, and what city is the Illumination Foundation Navigation Center in?
They're like two, the main office is two blocks away from Mary's Kitchen, just two blocks?
No, the one that we're referencing here, sir.
How far is it from Mary's Kitchen?
Just what city it's in.
Oh, what city, it's, oh, it's in the city of Fullerton.
I ask that you remember that in your advocacy. We are advocating for Fullerton and its residents, and the homeless people that are in Fullerton, those that are unhoused and struggling in Fullerton.
Yes, sir.
Which is not the council's responsibility to entertain that of residents or the people that are unhoused in Orange, right? That is Orange City Council's decision. So I, your advocacy extraordinarily admirable, sir.
Thank you, sir.
But I do want you to consider that in your advocacy, what cities those two are in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's why I recommend the Fullerton City Lights, where I live at, is the navigation center that all the homeless people would like to help.
Very well, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do not fund this organization, it's robbery. Thank you.
That said, I will entertain any discussion.
There is one more hand raising Zoom before you.
Oh, please.
Get quite there.
Yes.
Jane Rand, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lucinda. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about making the numbers add up. So it's 149,500 to house people at $40 a night or a day for about a 90-day period. It comes out to that, on average, about 40 people were served. It comes out to that, on average, about 40 people were served. And assuming we have that same rate of service for the next six months that this agreement goes through, this seems like an excessive amount of money allotted to funding Illumination Foundation, more than double what would really be needed. I was just trying to figure out, do we intend to house more people there over this period of time? And what mechanism will we use to house more people there? There's a huge barrier to people accessing the center in that they have to go through some kind of intake process. And at limited times, it's not available at all times and all days. I know it's, it's sad that it is. But if we're talking about homeless liaison officers, that quite often I watch them in doing their work and even dialoguing with them. They're, they spend most of their time not necessarily working with. And on the board, it's not their job. We need people. It's their job to be doing that work. And I know that you said there's some caseworker people. I'd like to know who they are, how many there are, when they're available, and how many people they think they can actually provide, get into this facility. I'm just thinking that this model isn't really working for the majority of people on the street. For example, when we had the cold weather shelter open at the armory that was walk-in, we had typically 200, sometimes it would stretch it beyond that in there at night. And 40 people is a far cry from that amount of people having somewhere to lay their heads down where they're safe and warm, can get a shower and get a hot meal. I'd just like some understanding of how effective this is and why this is costing so much. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments? All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council. Any discussion from council?
Well, just, I'll move the item, but just to say that at the Illumination Foundation, the reason they're charging is that there's wraparound services there, whereas the prior shelter, you would walk in and walk out, and there'd be no services of any kind in terms of health, you know, healthcare, mental health, training. So with that, I'll move the item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also just make a comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
There is a new state law that allows for people to seek, I guess, complaints, or to file complaints against any nonprofits, especially shelters, I believe, that is now state law. So, you know, there is now a little bit more accountability. And I do hear you, Mr. Gamble, about some of the concerns that you have. And I'm sorry if some of the responses that you got were a bit patronizing. But there are, you know, you have very valid points. With that, I will second this item.
Very well.
One comment before the vote.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
I oppose the use of ARPA funds for this purpose back when, so I will be consistent tonight.
Very well, sir. All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitaker.
No.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes 401.
And finally, this evening, I do want to circle back to the mayor pro tem's concerns and questions as to why committee meetings are either canceled with regards to their regularity and their frequency. And if we can get an answer for that, I certainly would appreciate from staff.
Again, we are struggling in some cases with our staffing issues. Planning commissioner notes been challenging. We have five vacancies that we are recruiting for right now just for that department alone. And so it's, a lot of this is part of the process we're going through, just being able to keep the workflow up in order to bring the business forward to the commissions has been a bit challenging. I'm hopeful that that will be remedied here in the next month or two as we seek to fill these positions and move things forward.
Very well. Sounds like hope is on the horizon. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, anything further, sir?
Not at this time.
Thank you. With that said, this meeting is adjourned. Next scheduled meeting, same bat time, same bat channel. Thank you, folks.